Good evening, everyone. Council, please acknowledge your presence when your name is called. Nestor De La Torre.
Present.
Akori Ezini.
Present.
Veronica Jones.
Here.
Jennifer Lee.
Here.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Diane Morrison.
Here.
Judy Matthews, yes, here. Justin Robertson.
Here.
Gloria Sanica.
Here.
Patricia Sutherland.
Here.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Present.
Celia Vega.
Present.
John White.
Present.
Dorothy Young.
Here.
We have a quorum of all attended.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item number 1.3, and that will be the approval of the August 15, that is this meeting, agenda. Turn it over to the vice chair.
Okay, are there any corrections to the agenda? And I have one to start with. I'd like to add 3.3 swearing-in of the candidates that I neglected to put on there in the first place. 3.3 swearing-in.
Okay, council members, you have seen the agenda and the addition. What is your pleasure?
I'm going to approve.
Okay, move to approve. A second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Councilmember Thomas. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Unanimous? Okay, now let's go to the chairman's report. A little bit long today. First of all, I'd like to thank the members of the council for sacrificing your Saturday, and that was on August 5, 2017, to attend your orientation design to make us better as we represent Altadena. We are very grateful to Susan Eimer, who is the Senior Field Deputy to Supervisor Catherine Barger, for sharing the county's perspective of the Altadena Town Council. Together, we can do better, reach out to the community, while being very respectful and professional in the way we conduct council business and relate to each other. I want to thank you for your suggestions, which your executive committee have started to implement. We all agree we need to reach out to the community as well as embrace and collaborate with all organizations in Altadena. We also agree the use of committees, it will be beneficial and can be effective for the Altadena Town Council in reaching out to the community. I ask each council member at your leisure to please submit to the executive committee for consideration any committees, committee or committees that you envision and will be willing to chair and/or lead if approved. This is important. Whatever committee that you come up with, I think you should be prepared to lead it or chair that committee. In light of the foregoing and in consultation with the executive committee, we have a community relations committee that has been created, and council member Dr. Sandra Thomas has agreed to chair that committee. And so tonight, the community relations committee has been instituted, and Dr. Thomas will chair that committee. And Dr. Thomas, may I ask you, is that okay with me?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, the other thing that I would like to bring to the attention of the community is, at the July Altadena Town Council meeting, we had announced the community standard district members will be formally recognized at this, at the August meeting. The CSD committee worked very hard for nearly four years, and I'm pleased to bring up, at this time, Christian Dally, Assistant Field Deputy to Supervisor Catherine Barger, to make a presentation and recognition on behalf of Supervisor Catherine Barger. And after that, then we can continue. So I yield it all to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the Altadena Town Council and also to the Altadena community. It's always a pleasure to come up to Altadena, as I am a hometown kid, if you did not know that. Now you do. But it is my honor to be here on behalf of Supervisor Catherine Barger. We wanted to stand with the community of Altadena to salute those that put in countless hours and time and energy on the committee to just pour into the Community Standards District. We just want to say we appreciate them. If I can have those that are present, that are on that committee, if they can now stand, we don't mind if you can stand there. I'm going to ask you, sir, if you can stand on my right. We have something special for you. So on behalf of Supervisor Catherine Barger, we would like to just thank you very much for your dedicated service. Like I said, the countless hours, and you know them, I don't know if you've been counting them. But nonetheless, we thank you, because it is an ordeal, and time is truly a precious commodity for us humans. And to give of that time says a lot and means a lot. So on behalf of Supervisor Catherine Barger and as a hometown kid, on behalf of Altadena, we want to thank you very much for your time and service.
On behalf of the other members of the committee, we did work countless hours, and we do have jobs and different things that we do in the community, contracting and so forth. And a lot of us work nine to fives, and we have doctors and so forth. So unfortunately, they couldn't make it tonight, but we want to say thank you. We enjoy working for the community, for the people, and together with the town council, we were successful in doing what we need to do to help lift Altadena and make it so homeowners can have a few more rights to do things that they need to do in the community. And I think we did a good job. Thank you so much.
And I will leave the scrolls for you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this time.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on. Congresswoman Judy Chu has a new field representative, and that is Shannon Lewis, that will be covering Altadena for her office. I'd like to bring up Shannon Lewis for a one-to-two-minute introduction.
She needs a lot taller than me. I'll hold it. All right, hello, everyone. Hello, good evening, Altadena Town Council. My name is Shannon Lewis, and it is my honor to be here representing Congresswoman Judy Chu as her new field representative, and specifically here in the area of Altadena along with Pasadena. So I just wanted to come by and introduce myself, as I start to be more present and let you know exactly what my position is and exactly what I'll be out here doing. So I look forward to seeing you all. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. And stop by if you have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you so much, Shannon.
I have a question. What is it, Becky Chang, is it?
Yes.
Is she still with the office?
Yes, she's the district director.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from, or comments from council? Somebody's coming to help you there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on. Okay, vice chairman's report, and that will be councilmember Sutherland.
One more time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to let you know that the executive committee met on August 8 and set the agenda for this meeting. If you would like to make public comment, the public comment cards are on the piano. You can fill them out and give them to one of the councilmembers at either end of the table. Please be sure and put your address on the cards. Usually, they're there, but it's very helpful, because if public comment, we generally do not respond to at the meetings, but in the event that whatever information you'd like to comment on will require a response, we'd like to make sure that we connect you with the councilmember for your census tract. So it really helps to have your address. One of the things that we discussed in the executive committee meeting this last week, we decided to listen to members of the community and members, councilmembers, in an experiment. There are those who would like, who would like to see the public comment not sit at the end of the council meeting every week, or every month, I mean. So we will be, starting next month, we will endeavor to move it up in the agenda. It may not be the same place in the agenda every month, but we'd like to move it further, further toward the beginning of the meeting and see if that is of any benefit to folks. So I wanted to let you know about that. This week, public comment is at the end where it has been previously. Another item that we talked about in the executive committee meeting is that, let's see how to say this, well, we'd like to make some changes in the agenda itself. We do have community reports. We'd like to encourage more groups in the community to make some reports. So we will be reaching out to members in as many of the local, as many of the groups as we can get ahold of. This does not mean that we would be able to give everybody, every group in Altadena a place on the agenda every single month. Maybe it's quarterly, maybe it's every two or three or four months. Depends on how many people would like to provide information on your group. So just to let you know that we're going to be reaching out to add some additional Altadena groups to the agenda in the future. And I think that's all I have for this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. If it is possible, we can leave this one hot all the time, please. The recording secretary, and that will be councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Chairman. Council, you were provided the draft minutes of July 18, 2017, with the response date of Monday, July 14, 2017. There was only one suggested inclusion which was made, the item number 8.3. Are there any others corrections, not corrections, any other comments or suggestions to the minutes? Not hearing none, I move that the July 18, 2017 meeting minutes be approved.
Second?
Okay, you've heard the motion to approve the July 18 minutes, and it's properly seconded by councilmember Sutherland. What is your pleasure? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Any abstention? Okay. Carrie's again, and going on to the treasurer's report, and that will be councilmember White.
The current balance for the Altadena Town Council is $2,211. The account is in good standing. We have no debts outstanding. We are a volunteer organization. We do appreciate those who contribute to the council. Please feel free to do so.
Okay, thank you so much. And moving on to the correspondent secretary's report, and that will be councilmember De La Torre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Billy has mentioned in the past when he was corresponding secretary, I want to encourage all town councilmembers to ensure that their contact information is correct and relevant, and that way each of your constituents or anybody in the community can contact you. I would also like to go further. If any of you have any social media pages or your own Facebook webpage that you have, and you would like to put that on the website, I would like to encourage you to send me that link. That way, there's more opportunities for members of the community to get in touch with you in different methods. I would also like to report on the goings-on of the website committee. Today, Justin and I met, and we were talking about what needs to be done to help the website committee and what should be planning for the future. Our current goal is to optimize the website, so it's not slowing down, or so it's working at the ideal speed. And for the future, we would hope to use it as a resource for the community to get relevant information on not only town council matters, but stuff going on in the community. And that is all.
Thank you so much. Moving on to supplementary election. Okay, so I will have the parliamentarian to pass out the ballot, and then I'll turn it over to the vice chair to lead.
Everyone, would please take one ballot. Mr. Chair, would you ask them to throw it out in their passes, Pat?
Okay, yeah. We're going to have...
They got to talk first, right?
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
As I, as I, as I think most of you in the audience know, we have open seats in two of our census tracts. So first, we would like to have a brief statement from each of the candidates. The candidate requirements that they have all turned in has been provided previously to everybody on the council, but we'd like to hear from you all in person. So first, let's start with the single unopposed candidate in census tract 4601, who is Victoria Knapp.
Good evening, council members and members of the community. My name is Victoria Knapp. My family and I moved to Altadena six years ago, after spending my entire life in Pasadena. My father was a almost two-decade city attorney for Pasadena, so I grew up with city government, a city, did we, there we go, a city government background and education, and I spent time at council meetings in Pasadena. I spent time in his office. And we were looking for a smaller community and wanted to be, live in an area where we could contribute to the community. So my husband and I looked for 18 months, and finally, we were able to move up here. We're a young family. We have children, one is 10 and one is four. So safety, community activities, and community involvement are things that are all really important to us. I have a master's in industrial psychology. I spent my entire career in the staffing industry, and I'm very happy to be part of the Altadena community. As soon as we moved here, I met with a number of local business owners, some of whom I see in the audience tonight, and would count many of them as my friends. Networking is extremely important to me. New business development is extremely important to me, and I do hope that you will be unanimous in voting me into a seat in the council tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. In census tract 4612, we have two candidates. First, Douglas Cauliflower.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. It's a pleasure to be here and an honor to be considered for the seat. I first discovered Altadena while investigating the lease opportunities at the Altadena and Eaton Canyon Golf Courses in 1984. We were successful in acquiring those leases, operated those golf courses until the fall of 2012. In September of 13, I took a job up in the Central Valley, a great golf course up there. And unfortunately, that golf course, we closed about two years later. During that tenure up there, the long commute necessitated that I relinquish my community involvement. So I'm back in Altadena full-time now. Commenced my career in residential real estate in the fall of 2015. Very much enjoying being back in the community, being active in the community, and look forward to continuing to serve the community. And it would be an honor and a privilege to represent the census tract for the community and the town council. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Doug. And we also have Reginald Wilkins. Wilkins, I'm sorry, Reggie.
Good evening, town council and audience. I'm sure a crew will remind you, remember, I have a hard time not being wordy, so I will do my best to be different than I was a couple of years ago when I was in this dark space. I am a 17-year resident of Altadena. I got a couple of boys in the public schools here. I got one guy about to start MUR. As a matter of fact, he started yesterday. And go MUR, yeah, and, you know, trying to get a teenager motivated to do anything besides on the screen is a challenge, but I'm doing my best. And you all have my statements. I am a PhD economist from Claremont. I'm an energy efficiency researcher. I am involved in politics and all sorts of crazy things like astronomy. But you have that. What I wanted to share was an experience I had last night when I was considering how my son was going to get back from school to his after-school program. I was going through, looking at the maps of the area, and I don't know east-west Altadena very well, except for the preschool that my son went to, Woodbury. And so I'm looking through their thing, what's the best route to walk, you know, 14 minutes, 15 minutes, take the bus? I did some research, and I saw that, you know, there was a murder there, not too far from where the Boys and Girls Club is. Actually, there's a whole bunch of murders, like three or four happened a few months ago. And I started researching that, then I found this page in the LA Times where it had the pictures of these, I guess 100 people have been murdered in the last 10 years in this area. I'm looking through these pictures, and I, I saw myself in some of those kids. And I imagine that there was someone that could have done something for them, so they wouldn't be dead right now. And I don't want to be the person who turned down the opportunity to serve others, because I have got it made. I don't have to be here. I mean, you got a nice house in East Altadena. We're both working, making lots of money. The kids are, you know, everything's fine. I don't have to be here, but I saw those kids, and I saw my face in those boys that are dead now. And I want to do my part for Altadena and Pasadena, so that doesn't happen. I may not succeed, but it starts with us caring about other people. And that's why I love public service. If I was wealthy, I wouldn't be working at all. I'd be doing public service all the time, but I'm not. So I'll do the best I can, and I want to make Altadena beautiful and even more beautiful than it is now. I'm dedicated. I love the sound, I love the people, I love the mountains, I love the stars, and I really had a good time here, despite the Walmart pain that I suffered for two years on the council. So I want to be a good servant for the council and for the community and for the youth, because it's all about the future. In 30 years, I won't even be here, maybe 20, but the kids will. And I want to say, I tried. Thank you.
Thank you, Reggie. Council members, you all have our ballots. So if, what?
Are we able to say anything about any of the people?
Well, that's not typical, but if you'd rather...
Well, I just wanted, Doug didn't want to say the...
If you'd rather say something, hold on one moment. If you, if you, I'll make an exception, and chair's privilege, you may speak.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure Doug didn't mention that he's been on town council, was on town council for quite some time, and has the experience of that, plus executive committee. I don't know why he didn't say that, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And Reggie was on town council as well. Doug was on longer, you know, half, 6:1, half 30 the other, anyway.
All right, thank you for the information, well noted. Council members, you now have the ballot, and so what I ask that you do is you vote and pass it back this way, so that we can give it to...
Fold it in half.
Yeah, fold it in half, and we will get it back to the parliamentarian, and we will move on with the agenda if we have to. The parliamentarian will do the tabulation and let us know what the results are, so that we can announce it, and then do this one end. Okay. And councilmember Matthews, we appreciate you taking the time to put together the ballot for us, and we thank you for that. All right. Oh, I see someone about to clap, so, yeah. Okay, so we give you another couple of minutes. Well, actually, a couple of minutes if you start it. Yeah, okay. We will move on when she's done, then we can get back, go back to it. So let's move on. Well, this might take a while, the library. You know what? May I use the chair's privilege here and move on to the item number 5.1? And I saw Officer Cooper, so if we may bring you up, we appreciate. Yes, that's what everybody said, Officer Cooper. We were expecting Officer Mike Yolo.
Oh, I forgot. He texted me moments before I left to come here that he's not, he's not...
Yeah, I'm here to fill in. I'm Officer Cooper, the Altadena CHP, and yeah, I'm filling in for Officer Yolo tonight. He couldn't be here. So I came by to see if anybody had any questions or anything we needed to address. I also wanted to mention, as most of you know, we're back in school as far as sessions. I'm sure you've all noticed the traffic increasing a little bit. So I just wanted to mention to everybody to make sure that you're leaving yourselves a little more time in the morning, so that you're not rushed, and make sure that if you are dropping kids off or you commute near the schools, to make sure that we're obeying the speeds, obeying the crossing guards, making sure that we're stopping at the stop signs and doing what we can to help the traffic flow more smoothly around these schools, because it tends to be a little more chaotic when the school year just starts, and everybody's trying to figure out the program, and it kind of settles in a little bit. So we will be out there doing some extra enforcement the next couple of weeks, so trying to help everybody kind of get the program. So that's all I've got, unless anyone's got any questions for me.
Any questions from any member of the council?
I have a quick question.
All right.
I unfortunately missed the National Night Out, because I was out of town.
Okay.
Were you there with your motorcycle again?
I actually was not...
My daughter loved that, it was a great thing, and I just wanted to...
Yeah, I'm not back on the motorcycle yet. It's going to be about three more weeks before I'm back on it. I was over at the Loc Resona, my area that I usually handle now. I was over at the National Night Out. I'm not into town, so I was not at the Altadena one.
So I'm sorry I missed you, but I didn't.
Ah, you didn't. Next time, though. Anyone else?
Well, thank you so much, and welcome back.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to seeing you back, back on the bike.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Altadena Sheriff's Station, and is it, okay, so it's Lieutenant Octave that will be presenting. And again, welcome back. We haven't seen you in a while.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Town Council. Thank you for the great welcome. Lieutenant Octave, assigned to Altadena Station under the direction of Captain Vicki Stuckey. We also have our operations lieutenant, Yolanda Clay, in the audience. The report, I would like to, I am pleased to say that we do have a slight decrease in crime in July. It went from a total of fifty-six Part One crimes to fifty-three. Of those crimes, we had one rape. We had zero robberies. Robbery weapons are actually down from one to zero. The robbery strong arms increased slightly, however. We also had aggravated assaults, they increased, they actually decreased. They're down from five to two. Our residential burgs, they've also increased just slightly from nine to eleven. Our burglary, other structures, have also increased. We've also had a, I'm pleased to say that we've had a decrease in our vehicle burglaries. There were ten during the previous month, and there were three during July. And again, I would like to say, we couldn't do this alone. We really, really appreciate the help of the community. And I encourage you to, however, to continue to remove your valuables from your cars. Our larceny shop liftings also increased slightly from zero to one. We had a decrease in our GTA's or our grand theft autos from seven to three. We did have one arson, and our narcotics arrests have increased. I do have an announcement. I'd like to encourage the outstanding community of Altadena to attend our ninetieth year anniversary, i.e. open house, which will occur at Altadena Station this upcoming Saturday, and it's from ten to two. And we would like to welcome the community, and we're encouraging everyone to come out and celebrate this outstanding event with us. Any questions?
Any questions from members of the council? Okay, there is one, Councilmember White.
Yes, sir.
Yes, concerning the residential burglaries in four, six, zero, one. We continue to see a significant number of burglaries in that Census Track month after month. Can you speak to that?
Yes, and it's kind of like I previously said, whenever we see an increase, we do saturate the area. At this point, we are calling upon the community to assist us. See something, say something, call us. Don't hesitate to call us when you see a car that looks suspicious, and we'll come out and ensure that we continue to saturate the area. But what we do is we get that message out to the troops through briefings, tabletop discussions. And I know it's increased slightly, but we've had a couple of months where it's decreased, and we attribute that directly to the community calling in these types of crimes. So, when an individual is out perpetrating a crime, if he sees, let me just also say that, don't put yourself in harm's way when you call us. But one of the best defenses is like your neighborhood watches and things along those lines. And when, we encourage you to continue to call us when you see any types of crimes in progress, and that's a, that is a significant deterrent to these types of crimes.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Sanyekov.
In forty-six ten, where you have the grand larcenies and the thefts?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, is that maybe due to an increase in activities at the gym?
We'll probably have to meet off-site. I can speak with you off-session and go over that portion with you. But there is not just that area. It's just a number of, you know, different areas. And we do have, we are well aware of the increase, and the saturation efforts and directed patrols have been put in place to try and mitigate these types of crimes.
Okay, Councilmember Malone?
In our district, you've got the one lone arson. And I'm just wondering if, I mean, there's a strange beast, and it appears strangely. Is that something where someone's going around setting fire to a personal property? Or is it someone who's mad at the landlord? Or is it a forest fire that someone started?
All accounts is that that was a random incident. That individual was taken into custody and detained. But we believe that was a random incident.
Was it on a residential property?
Yes. Or actually, it was actually on kind of like a street, highway-type area.
Oh.
So, it was not on residential property.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then the only other thing I want to mention is, I bought my daughter again to the last open house. And if anybody goes, take your kids. They love it. They get to see the jails. They get to have hot dogs, if you have hot dogs. It's not just, it's not just a thing to go and see if you're grown up, but take the kids too. It's good to see the family and the kids, to see what you guys do.
Absolutely. And that's a great point, sir, and we do encourage that. One thing I did forget to mention, too, is that at the open house, you will get an opportunity to talk with the deputies that are currently serving our community, and we will have several deputies there that have served us in the past. So, that's a great point, and it will give the children an opportunity to see how we enforce law enforcement, and also maybe to recruit some future deputy sheriffs.
Okay, thank you so much. And just one comment from me. I attended, well, I've been there a couple of times, and I, well, you have the horses. Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Just a chair's privilege, before we move on, Lieutenant Octave, the marijuana dispensary, were you supposed to make any comment?
We are, sir, great question. We are aware of that issue, and we will remain diligent in our saturation efforts, and that is going to be an ongoing investigation.
Okay.
Quick correction, too, on our mounted posse. They, I've been told that they have a previous engagement, so they will not be there at our ninetieth year anniversary on Saturday. So, I do stand corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving back to the supplemental election, I do have the tally. I had Dr. Councilmember Thomas to do the first count, and it was recounted by Councilmember La Torre. So, both figures matches. So, I would like to say, number one, congratulations. Okay, congratulations to, by the way, the two, the three individuals, two being former council members, makes me feel good that both of them are very qualified to be on the Town Council. They have served here before, and their willingness to come back and be maybe tortured, or maybe have some value, additional value to add, makes me feel good. And I believe that's shared by the rest of the council. So, I would like to say congratulations to Victoria, Map, and I will say congratulations to Reginald Wilkins. Okay, I'll turn it over to the Vice Chairman to do this one end, and we'll bring the two, you know, candidates up and seated. So, may we have Victoria and Reginald to come forth?
We stow it upon me on behalf of the community.
We stow it upon me on behalf of the community.
And pledge to uphold the Town Council's bylaws and ethical standards.
And pledge to uphold the Town Council's bylaws and ethical standards.
During my term in office.
During my term in office.
You are now be seated. Okay, moving up to the, are we almost there? If not, I can just bring in Cert. Okay. Okay, we can do Cert. Dan Page. Okay, anyone representing Cert? Okay, no one. So, moving on to Map Your Neighborhood. Oh, okay. Sorry about that. This Map Your, okay, Mr. Eric.
No Cert.
Vanderbilt.
Vanderbilt?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before the Town Council. Map Your Neighborhood, if you're not familiar, is a disaster preparedness program. It's a program that teaches the nine steps to act after a disaster. The first of the six are for your family, for your property, to take care of them. And then the next three are to come together with the community and to help each other out. So, since, since starting a year and a half ago, our goal has been to, to reach at least ten percent of the households in Altadena, which there are about over fifteen thousand. And so, to date, we have reached five percent of those. That's like seven hundred and fifty. So, it's, we feel very accomplished about this. So, we'd like to ask you all to consider to come to our trainings. The Altadena Town and Country Club is very gracious in giving us an opportunity to hold our meetings there at their place. We have two more meetings in 2017, one of which is September seventeenth at Altadena Town and Country Club, and then November twelfth at the Metropolitan Baptist Church, which was very well represented tonight. So, I'd like you all to consider that. If you'd like any more information, we have flyers on the back here, or you can see me. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to county fire. Do we have a representative from the county fire? Okay, perfect.
Good evening. I'm Battalion Chief Leland Delaney. Kind of a last-minute substitute for Maria Greiken. She had a conflict in the schedule, so I just wanted to go over the activity report for July. So, going over the incidents, we had eight fires, two hundred and seventy-three medical responses, fifteen surface category responses, three hazmat incidents, five incidents that were considered hazardous condition, and sixty-three good intent calls. Two hundred and seventy-three patients seen, and it's broken down by the nature of the call and the, what would be considered the chief complaint. Two hundred and nineteen transports, a hundred and twelve which we considered advanced life support, and a hundred and seven that we considered basic life support incidents. And just further on the other side, it breaks down the fire incidents. Out of the eight fires, a couple of them were brush fires, nothing significantly large, a quarter acre. The next one, five foot of grass that was possibly intentionally set and was turned over to the sheriffs for investigation. A palm tree fire caused by fireworks. Just another fire considered in the category of other just ornamental vegetation and a planter. Trash fire, another brush fire, this one, an eighth of an acre due to down power lines. Small grass fire, ten-by-ten spot, and another trash fire. And just list other, under, other incidents, you see a number of downed power lines, a couple of gas leaks, and, and just another cause of hazardous conditions, arcing wires. I'm actually a visiting battalion chief due to vacations and injury leave, so I'm not sure if I can answer too many questions about the local area, but any questions that you have for me, I can certainly answer.
Okay. First of all, will it be possible to get your name for the record?
I'm sorry, did?
You did, but we just want to make sure we spell it correctly.
Oh, I'm sorry. Leland Delaney, Battalion Chief.
Can you spell it for?
L-E-L-A-N-D.
Okay.
D-E-L-A-N-E-Y.
Okay, any questions for the county fire? Okay, Councilmember Sutherland?
It's not a question as much, as much as a statement. I really liked this report that you're giving us. There's a whole lot of information that's on it that we just weren't seeing before, and it really is quite helpful.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And like I said, I'm sure you're familiar with Maria Greiken. She's a community service rep. She put that together, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. Oh, okay, one more question from Councilmember Malone.
I'm not sure you can answer this because you said you weren't sure locally.
Yeah.
But how are our mountains doing? Have we got heavy brush or low brush because there was a fire a couple of years ago? I mean, what's the risk percentage of our mountains right now?
Okay, what we have in, it's true of probably all of California, including this local area. You have a lot of old growth vegetation, and what we're dealing with now, our weather's pretty mild. So far, we haven't had too many red flag days or anything like that. But what you have with the active rainy season we had, what you have is a very abundant grass crop that is now curing and is all dying off. So, the light grasses is what gets the fire started, and it will carry it into the heavier stuff. So, that's why it's, we stress the brush clearance to anybody that has, you know, the hillsides or anything adjacent to their property. So, it's, it's going to be possibly a very busy season. We just, you know, hopefully, we can get on things quickly, and that's our, our goal is to hit it quickly with our air support. Actually, today was the first day that the super scoopers were down from Canada again. Today was their first day being active down here. So, when any significant, any brush fire start, we're going to have those additional air assets to hopefully hit any fires very quickly and knock them down before they get into being a multiple-day incident or large fire.
Do we have those now to the end of the season?
Yes, yes, yeah. Today was the first day. We'll have them throughout the end of the brush season.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. All right. Oh, my apologies. I didn't see the hand.
No problem.
Okay.
The report here says good intent. Can you explain what good intent is? That's just visits you do, or?
Uh, most likely, and I didn't put the report together, Maria did, but most likely, it could be public assistance. Somebody calls where they need...
Cat on the tree?
Yes. A problem... Yes, um, a problem with their, you know, gas leak, um, someone, uh, an elderly person is falling on the bed, they need assistance, uh, public assist calls.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Okay, any other questions from council? All right, I don't see any. Again, thank you so much. All right, uh, we are back to the Altadena Library Presentation. Mindy Kote, sorry about that, we'll be better prepared.
Yeah, 'cause I, I mean, I didn't know. So, um, I didn't really have anything prepared besides that. So, I passed out the written document of the year in review and, um, and the current newsletter, and we just finished up summer reading for the kids, and, um, on, I believe it's the 23rd of this month, we will be having the finale of summer reading for all ages, live music at the library. So, um, we hope that you will come to that, and other than that, um, the only other thing I want to mention is remind everybody again about the fundraiser that we're having this year called Taste of Dina, which is going to be on September 23rd from 7 to 9 o'clock. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mindy? Okay, I don't see any hands. Thank you so much, and we will definitely be ready in September. Okay, so I guess that'll be the same issue with the, uh... Okay, while, while you're preparing, are we going to move on with the Land Use Committee? And that will be Councilmember... Oh, hold on one moment.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In regards to the Taste of, of Dina.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just asking, is it possible that the chapter, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm got a, my hat's on the wrong place. Is it possible that Town Council can have a table at the Taste of Dina?
Um, there, there are, um, the people who are in line to the website, there are options of just a table to sell individual tickets.
Okay. When I say table, I mean like booth.
I thought you said there was no table.
Like booth.
Well, there are tables at the Taste of Dina.
Can you go to my, to the mic, please? To the mic, please?
Yeah, so I think what you, well, Mindy, well, now she's saying a booth.
No, it wasn't now I was saying, I'm just explaining it to her, Diane.
Okay.
I meant booth, not table.
Uh, well, this is a fundraiser. Yeah, it's not like, um, I, it's not that kind of event.
Okay, so we can't have a booth.
Why don't we talk about it?
I'll talk about it.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
We do have another event for that coming up in November. We're having a, um, what's it called when you have, close the street? We're having a block party in the parking lot, and we're inviting all or, local organizations to have booths, and we'll be having food trucks and other items there. So, that'll be a great event for that.
Okay.
Land Use Committee, thank you, Mindy, Land Use Committee, Councilmember Markison.
Yes, the Land Use Committee met two weeks ago. We had a presentation from the Palm Street Project. It's my understanding from you and Cory that they still have some outstanding items on their, um, list of things to provide to the county or for the county to complete for the evaluation, so we're still in presentation mode on that project. And when we get to a point where we're gonna be voting on it, we'll get the word out to the community, but I'm looking to you to let me know when you're ready, when the project's ready, you and Billy.
Correct, I did reach out to the planner, and the EIR report and the detailed oak tree report are still missing, and we are not prepared to schedule at this time until we have had the opportunity to review the EIR and other documents. Once the county says that they are ready to go, then at that point, we can schedule. Thank you.
That's our report.
All right, Education Committee, uh, the, the other presentation, are they ready?
Yeah, I think she lost her thunder.
Okay. All right, Education Committee, Councilmember Lee.
On August 26th at 10:00 a.m. at the library is a town hall for the Altadena Town Council Education Committee, and that committee has four people at this point. I'm the chair, and Billy Malone is one of the other members of the Education Committee, and two other parents who are in PUSD. We will have principals and other representatives from the five public schools in Altadena, discussing the schools. We're gonna open it up for question and answer, and we'll be discussing our public schools in Altadena that are under PUSD. 10 o'clock, August 26th, it's from 10 to 12 in the community room at the library. And there are flyers on the piano in the back.
Feel free to take flyers and hand them out.
Okay, there is a question for the Education Committee coming from Councilmember De La Torre.
Uh, yeah, sorry, not a question, but I just want to let the community know that the flyer is on the website, so you, if, there's not enough in the back, or if you wanna spread the word, it's already on the website, on the main webpage.
Okay, final, this is, this is part of our community outreach. Your Altadena Town Council is very serious, education is very important, the committee has been constituted, and we need your feedback, we need your support. So, August 26th at 10:00 a.m. at your library, please come, we want to hear from you, we need some, your suggestions, your guidance, and let's all together, all hands on deck, and get this, the movement in the direction that we want it. Thank you.
From Pasadena Unified School, uh, from the school board? No. Oh, actually, well, I mean, not on the committee, but at the event.
Yes.
Kim Kenny's going to be there, so we will have, she will be there in attendance, but not on the committee, though.
Okay, we will have a member of the Pasadena Unified School District Board at the event. Okay, thank you so much, and let's move on. Are you not ready? Okay, um, uh, I just...
Do a pocket?
County Parks and Recs, if you can come forward. And we're excited, and we've been excited since, uh, since the weekend. None other than Melissa Hernandez.
I don't have the black keychain, sorry. Hello, everyone. Oh, it's loud today.
Oh, yeah, we need some of that. Some people are sleeping.
Oh, I know, wake up, wake up. Parks and Rec is in the house. Hello, Councilmembers, thank you so much for having me. It's the end of summer for us, yay. My name's Melissa.
Kids are back in, yeah.
Yeah, kids are back in school, so it slows down just a little bit in the park. My name's Melissa Hernandez. I am the district manager for LA County Parks and Recreation, so I manage the Altadena area here and all of our parks. We have three parks, Farnsworth Park, just up lake, Loma Alta Park on Lincoln Avenue, and Charles White Park on Ventura, Mountain View, Mountain View, yeah, that's the formal address, Mountain View. So, um, let's talk about things that happen. I want, want to talk about one great thing that happened this weekend at Loma Alta. We had a backpack giveaway, and it was a wonderful event. Those that were there, thank you for coming out. We gave away, um, over 700 backpacks that day. So, we had 700 students come in, all the way from preschool to college students. Some of my staff that are in college were able to get a free backpack, too, so that was really cool. So, yeah, thank you to the community, the church, Parks and Rec, everybody that came out. It was a great event. We had jumpers, free haircuts, um, the backpacks, there was popcorn, cotton candy, all kinds of stuff. I was able to have a community meeting to get some input of people that don't visit the park regular, and then people that do visit the park regularly, to get some feedback. So, that was nice. We had, um, a great time. So, let's talk about, Judy Matthews was nice enough to visit us and say a few words to the community, 'cause that's the area she represents, so thank you so much for coming out. Tiny Tots, that is ages three to five. If you're looking for a program for a three to five-year-old, come to our parks. Loma Alta has a great Tiny Top program. They have wonderful instructors, great classroom. We are taking signups now. Flag football is happening at, um, Farnsworth Park and Loma Alta Park, so if you're interested in that, I'm gonna tell you where you can get all this information in a minute. Then we have cheerleading, boys and girls. I want to see my boys out there, too. We have cheerleading available at Farnsworth and Loma Alta. After-school club, Loma Alta, Charles White, and Farnsworth, so all three parks will have an after-school club, and volleyball at Loma Alta. We still have, 'cause, because, um, Loma Alta Park services so many charter schools, our summer day camp is still going, 'cause those kids don't go back till September. So, we will have, um, summer day camp still going until September 8th. So, um, if you still need somewhere to send your kids during the day because school hasn't started from, come down to Loma Alta and join our summer day camp, 'cause it's still going there. So, if you want any of this information about all our programs and the incredible prices you can get it at, trust me, you cannot find a cheaper price anywhere else for the kind of services you get with LA County Parks and Recreation. You want to go to parks.lacounty.gov, and right when you go onto that website, you'll see our new e-brochure. You can click on the e-brochure, you'll see all of the classes for adults, seniors, tiny tots, youth, everybody, and every program, and you can actually register for the class right through the e-brochure. There's little icons, if you like that class, you can register and pay right then and there. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, and, uh...
Oh, the picnic was a success today, I didn't say that. The picnic was an awesome success, and thank you for those of you that came out to the picnic. That was over 500 people for the Altadena Community Garden picnic.
Okay, well, I'm glad you mentioned that, but I don't want to be left out as well. I was at the event this past Saturday, and I thoroughly enjoyed the popcorns, and, uh, my church was well represented, the Battle of the Dina, there were the, the, uh, the
Basketball tournament, uh-huh.
Yes, so, uh, if you missed it, you missed something really, really great. You should have seen the smile on the, the children that came out to the event.
We look forward to doing it again next year. It was a great event.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Melissa from the council? Uh, Councilmember Matthews?
I, you know, we, we always say we love to see you and hear you and all, but I want to commend you for such an excellent job on Saturday.
Oh, thank you so much.
It was, it was so great to see the number of children that were there and literally in line outside of the park to get haircuts, so...
Yeah, the line was around the building.
It was amazing. Good job.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I love what I do. Love it, love it, love it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, the Chamber of Commerce and Councilmember Malone.
I, I'm just gonna give some dates today. On, um, August the 24th, we're gonna be restarting the, uh, uh, evening mixers and networks. It's gonna, the first one is gonna be at Meredith M., and then any business or, uh, member who wishes to hold the next, the next one networking, it can be at different locations from there, you're welcome. We've got a lot of attention already, so it will be busy. That is on August the 24th, uh, I am seven, uh, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. Please come. All members are free, non-members is a nominal fee of $5 to pay for refreshments and everything else. On September the 9th, we partnered with Senator Pontino's office to do a business walk to promote our local businesses. That will be, um, focusing on the Lake of Mariposa area and then stopping over on the west side as well.
Yeah.
Um, I believe it's gonna be Hoopla, I don't know, that's gonna come from Pontino's office. There may also maybe a change on the dates right now. Uh, September the 9th is tentative, but we have to look at what, I guess, they have to look at what dates Pontino can make it, and then it will go from there. So, um... I don't know if there's any, um, right now, there's no members, chamber members on Lincoln Avenue. They've reached out to them as much as possible. There was one member that was going to rejoin. Lincoln Avenue used to have a merchants' association, and that's another conversation. Their merchants' association was disbanded a few years ago, I don't know why. And so, what happens is, in any community, it's as strong as a community to get together. So, in Lincoln Avenue, what needs to happen is the merchants need to get together as an entity and a group, and then put more functions on as an entity. The chamber is not responsible for putting on funds for them, for supporting them in doing so in their areas. So, that, I, I, that's the best answer I can give, but that's, that's more of an in-depth thing that needs to be worked on, but I don't have the answer for. On September the 14th, uh, looking at doing a power breakfast. That's the tentative date I have right now, that will come out in the newsletter within the next day or two confirmed. That is, um, an informative breakfast, usually we have guest speakers, on the new CSDs and how it applies to the commercial districts. And, uh... The 14th right now, unless that changes. I'll know for sure in the next two days, and I know that you guys are gonna help, 'cause the east side was not under our CSDs before, if I'm remembering correctly, the business district. And now they are, so that might be an important meeting to, uh, to partner with the east side. It will be at the country club.
It will be in, in the morning?
It'll be in the morning, power breakfast. It usually starts around 7:30 tonight. But I'll know the more details in, in the next. And you can check their website, uh, the, sorry, the Facebook page and everything else, and if you sign up for the chamber newsletter on the website, um, you'll get the information from the newsletter. And then in October, we're looking to partnering with the parks again and doing, uh, we, uh, last year we did, uh, was a successful partnership with the LA County Parks and with the Altadena Farmers Market on the west side to host, um, movies in the park, at the park for the families. So, we had, um, Halloween movie, and then we had a holidays movie for the holidays. So, we're looking at redoing that again. That will be reaching out onto the west side and doing something there for the local community. So, um, we're looking at partnering again with the parks for that. So, that will, that's your freeway, freeway partnership, that's with the parks, the farmers' market, and, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. So, I don't have the dates or the movie yet, but that's something that should be happening again this October.
That's the end of your report? Okay, um, I, I will recommend to the council members, um, that are on Lincoln, to really work with, uh, the president of the chamber to, uh, get the businesses in that area to participate and become active. That's the only way to get things going.
Um, I, I'll make a statement right now, the, the chamber is similar to the Town Council, it's of all-volunteer basis, and so when you have businesses that work together with their other businesses, it's not really necessarily the chamber doing it if you see how, things happening in a certain merchant area, it's because the merchants have gotten together, and then they've reached out for support. And that sort of needs to happen a bit more on Lincoln, where the merchants can get together and then reach out for... and then reach out for support, because it's very hard to, to support one person without the other one getting upset and so forth and so on. So it needs a little bit more unification, and, and we can all help in that. We can all help in that.
Right, that's, that's what I'm recommending, uh, but starting with the, uh, uh, council members in those areas, if they can get started as they, uh, walk the census tract and just let them know that, uh, it would be a good thing to, uh, join the, uh, chamber or organize themselves and participate. Okay, any, okay, there's a question from,
Yeah, because, uh, Lincoln is my concern. So I just wonder, what do I tell the business that they get from the chamber? Or do I talk to you later about, if I go knock on the twenty-four-hour business and say, "You should be part of the chamber," and they say, "Why?" What, what do I do?
Well, first of all, the chamber here in Altadena, again, because it's, uh, it gets, unlike most, uh, an incorporated city, it gets no funding. So the only funding it gets is from membership. So the membership dues can only go, reach so far, and the dues are less than almost any other chamber you'll go to. Um, when you have a business community, you know, uh, the commercial districts will ask, you know, "Why, why don't you want to shop locally? Why are you going down the hill? Why are you going to shop locally?" But then, on the other hand, for a business, for the resident, is, "What are you doing for the community?" If you live outside the community, you just want to live with any of us, what, what are you doing for the community? The chamber is a way to create a partnership, so it's what, not just, so you don't have to do the outreach as a business. The, the chamber can do that for you, but you need to reach the chamber first, right? So they can do the, the go-between, so, you know, it's not just what we're doing for you, it's what you're doing for us. So it kind of bridges that. Um, with the chamber, you've got, and sometimes the, uh, things happen when you think, you don't even know you need support until you need it. Um, the businesses on Mariposa, for example, with their parking issues, they, uh, they desperately needed issues with parking and support, so they got together with a, uh, a petition with county, and the chamber was able to facilitate that and support, make that happen for them. Um, again, I, I listed a whole bunch of things as far as networking and other things we're doing to outreach the community.
I'm just surprised with McDonald's and the other businesses that are there, that they're not part of the chamber, and they've been there forever.
I will tell you that it's, a lot of the franchise these days do no longer, will pay into the community. So McDonald's, the banks that used to, they don't do, do that so much anymore, the big names. The franchise don't. In fact, um, you know, we talk about Ralph's leaving and all this. The only consistent members of the chamber over the years and the, the businesses that have stayed are the small local mom and pops. Everyone was worried about. Everyone's saying, "Why is Ralph's leaving, and what could we have done?" They didn't do much for us, but the mom and pops are still here. They never left, right? So that's really kind of what we, we need to reach out to and support them as much as we can, because they're the ones supporting our community.
I just, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say, uh, when you go south of Woodbury, then you're in Pasadena. So the McDonald's wouldn't necessarily, I mean,
No, McDonald's is Altadena.
Pasadena.
Is it Altadena?
It is, yeah, yeah. Both McDonald's are Altadena. Both McDonald's on the east side and, and west side. They're both in Altadena.
Okay, uh, thank you so much for your report, and, uh, I'm sure you all can continue to, you all can continue the dialogue. Uh, this is what we really want to emphasize, and that is, one way or the other, continue to engage the community. Uh, moving on to Collaborate Pasadena, and that'll be Councilmember Sanique.
Okay, um, the Collaborate Pasadena, uh, Leadership Council meeting was held at the Flint Ridge Retreat Center on July twenty-sixth at, uh, six PM. The meeting was called together by the, the, um, program director. We reviewed, uh, Leadership Council survey and gave input. We spent time discussing and approving terminology for the Collaborate Pasadena, and we learned about the adoption of the Pasadena Neighborhood Leadership Institute. There was a work group, um, update regarding early learning, and I have several announcements regarding upcoming events. And I was told, um, by a concerned resident that, um, you know, just to, to make an announcement that the P-A-S in Pasadena Collaborative, the P stands for Pasadena, the A is Altadena, and the S is Sierra Madre. So we are actually collaborating and working together. So if there's something that's going on in this activity, we don't want you to say, "Oh, that doesn't include me," because it does, okay? It's a collaborative between the three cities. So, um, um, the Collaborate Pasadena Neighborhood Leadership Institute will hold a ten-week grassroots training opportunity for anyone wanting to become more involved in the community. This activity is gonna take place on September the twelfth, and for more information, uh, you might want to visit collaboratepasadena.org/cpnli. And then on Saturday, September the twenty-third, there will, uh, there will be a launch of the Pasadena as an early learning city event that's gonna take place at, uh, Brookside Park. There's gonna be arts and crafts, healthy snacks, preschool, and parenting resource booths. And for more information, you want to contact the Pasadena office of the young child. And, uh, the last event, uh, is on September eighteenth, and I, I made mention of this one last, um, at our last meeting. September eighteenth, the Collaborate Pasadena will be hosting a community summit from five-thirty to eight at the La Casita del Arroyo, located at one-seven-seven South Arroyo Boulevard in Pasadena. And I do have some flyers. I don't have copies of them, but I will get, uh, forward these flyers to Nestor, and then he'll put these on the website, and then you can, um, get more information. But they're very colorful flyers, uh, talking about, uh, each of these events that I just mentioned. And, uh, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, question from, uh, okay, uh, Councilmember Matthews.
Gloria, can you send me a copy of the flyers as well?
Sure.
Any other? Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Sanique. Uh, forty-first assembly, uh, Councilmember Matthews.
I passed this evening. No reports, sir.
Okay. All right, we are doing very well, and, um, we have, uh, census tract report, and that will be, Um, if you will, if, if it is not too much trouble to do it to where you want to present it exactly how you want it to present it, rather than just rush it, that will be fine. Okay, no problem. All right, uh, census tract report, we need, uh, forty-six oh-three oh-one.
I'm going to do really brief, and since this is Dorothy's first time, I'm gonna let her go after me, because mine's gonna be less timely, you're saying? Okay. Um, I think all of you can notice in your, in your neighborhoods where there's a school, that you should have advanced warning signs, um, going in both directions of the school. Um, I've been working on this for the last maybe year and a half, uh, especially for the most busiest corner there on Lincoln and Altadena Drive. And the signage for the school has been placed in both directions. It was on the, the north side of the east street on the corner of Lincoln and Altadena Drive, and it has never been placed on the south side where the schools are. That means between, um, Lincoln Avenue West and Lincoln Avenue East. So now the signs are up, and the Department of Public Works will be, uh, looking into other areas that the same situation may be there. Okay?
Any question for Councilmember Matthews? Okay, now go with,
Can I just mention one thing?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, only, you were talking about the schools, and I just want to bring this up, is that, um, there was a case, uh, where a film crew was, had their trucks next to a school, and their, um, engines and generators were going to feed the air, the air conditioners inside the units. I did find out that they, they wouldn't shut them off, but I did find out there actually is a school bus ordinance. It's called a school bus ordinance to protect the kids in the playground. And it's so that school buses wouldn't idle outside the schools and pollute the playgrounds. So if you ever come across a situation with a film crew around by the schools, and they won't shut off the generators for their air conditioners, for their trailers and stuff, there is an ordinance for that, and you can get them to stop. So I just want to make that clear.
They call the, the sheriff? Who do they call?
The sher, I'm assuming the sheriffs. Um, and it's a school bus ordinance. It was originally put in place to stop the school buses from idling and the films going into the playground.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Wong.
Yes, hello, everyone. I just wanted to, uh, uh, give a brief update on some trail work activity, uh, in and around our census tract. So I've been attending the Altadena Crush Trail Working Group meetings. Um, and so some really, uh, amazing things have come together. And, uh, one in our census tract is, uh, the development of an equestrian, a safe path for equestrians to leave the existing Loma Alta staging area and not have to go onto Loma Alta Drive, where, uh, oftentimes, uh, cars are parked there, trash cans are there. Um, and, uh, there's gonna be a design, so if anyone wants to know, I have some pictures and, uh, input, initial input for the design, um, will, is due next week, uh, August twenty-second. And so it's a really exciting path, uh, that's gonna go north of Loma Alta Drive, sort of in where there's sort of the barbed-wire fence, and it's actually gonna be inside around the trees. And it will also create a safe, uh, crossing for the equestrians to cross, um, let's see, Sunset Ridge Road, uh, at that corner over to Loma Alta Park, where there is actually equestrian rings. So there's always a challenge for that population. So if anyone would like to give input, I have a bunch of extra copies, uh, for that. And speaking of trails, we had the most amazing event on August the sixth, uh, the thirty-third, uh, year of the AC One Hundred. So that, uh, was one hundred miles across the San Gabriel Mountains, finishing in Altadena-Loma Alta Park. Uh, the winner of the men, Jerry Garcia, was from Altadena, and one of our top five finishers, my good friend, uh, Diana Treister, I don't know if she's here. I just sort of made that last-minute announcement. Um, and it's an amazing, uh, community event. I have, um, if we want to get involved next year, I think it's an amazing event. Uh, it came off of, uh, Altadena Drive out of the Oroseco and cheering on, um, a hundred and sixty people. And I want to commend our ham radio crew, um, that is actually based in Altadena, uh, a part of the CERT program. They were helping keep all of the runners safe, uh, with timing, so kudos to that. And I really enjoyed, uh, my first-ever, uh, community garden, um, picnic. So kudos to everybody and the great gardeners and veggies and, um, everybody for making it awesome. And the most amazing raffle, if you guys don't ever miss that, the, the picnic, uh, was very awesome. So again, I have information on the AC One Hundred and, um, some maps for Shady, Shady Lane Trail. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, any questions for Councilmember Wong? All right, uh, that should be it. Forty-six oh-three oh-two is not going to be making any census tract report. Um, is there anything that I am forgetting? I know that we have public comments, so, um, before I turn it over to the vice chairman. Okay.
I only have one. Are there any more that didn't get handed in, by the way? Okay, so it's Michael Waters.
Do I go to the podium or?
Please.
So I won't take too much of anybody's time here, but I wanted to highlight and, uh, kind of draw a little bit of attention to a property on the corner of Mariposa and Fair Oaks. It is an abandoned slash unoccupied structure. I don't know the technical legal term for it, but it has been unoccupied since I moved here in two thousand thirteen. Um, it's never really been an issue until about last year, when one person was, I spoke, when I spoke to the Realtor, that is quote-unquote the responsible party there, said that one person was allowed on the premises to maintain the property. That person ended up starting to stay there overnight. Overnight turned to days, days turned to weeks, weeks turned to months, and then more and more people started to show up there. More and more people started to stay there overnight, and then that was followed by more and more activity. Uh, hundreds of police incident reports from myself and other residents that lived there, um, tying pit bulls to the front tree in the front yard, just feet from the sidewalk, unclipped hundred-pound pit bulls, illicit drug use, public intoxication, dumping on the property, broken windows, um, yelling, and obviously intoxicated individuals going in sober, leaving intoxicated, which many believe meant that there was drug sales or use or both going on at the structure. The police, when I spoke to them, said that they were hamstrung, that as long as one person was there to maintain the property, they could invite friends, and as long as that person vouched for those people, there's nothing that could have been done legally. I took it upon myself to look up any ordinances that might help us in this. Um, from everything I know, and I want to lean on the council right now to ask this question, is it true that any structure in this city that is unoccupied slash abandoned should be boarded and secured? If that's the case, this structure is not boarded and secured, and has not been boarded and secured. And if somebody is occupying the structure, the power needs to be turned on. The power is not turned on in that place, and people have been, and I can't say for sure are living there. There are still, the car is parked in front of the structure. Uh, I don't know if they're abandoned or if somebody lives there. Uh, I decided to become more involved and really approach the town council about this. I've seen teenagers walking in the alleyway behind the structure now, and that structure is right next to a toddler's school.
Great.
So I feel like, uh, there should be, you know, maybe, maybe there are ordinances that we could apply, and at the very least, the owner of the structure should board the structure and secure it with the fence, maybe like the Ralphs did, which is what leads me to believe that should be done.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Waters. If you'd hang on, it's in my census tract, and let me talk to you afterwards.
Okay.
Please.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Okay, uh, that concludes the, uh, public comment. Um, okay, um, eh, any motion?
Second.
All right, so motion, uh, seconded by, uh, Councilmember De La Torre. So the meeting is adjourned, adjourned at, uh, eight forty-three.